Is there any other questions, or there are any questions at this time from the board?
Nope.
No questions. Any comments?
No comment.
Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the application as a matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm the neighbor director.
You want to come before we-
You gotta come up.
Are you opposing this, or?
No, I'm not opposing.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna grant it, and then you can go talk to them on the side, is that alright?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
So the application's been granted.
Application number 266-25 Derrick Flores. Permission to leave above-ground pool having side yard of 10 feet and rear yard of 11.2 feet, instead of required 14 feet each, and roof over attached to shed having rear yard of 1.7 feet, instead of required 4 feet. Residence A District, south side of Poplar Street, 114.12 feet east of Freeman Avenue, Brentwood.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trela, Dynamic Expediting Services with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We are here tonight to maintain an existing above-ground pool that has a side yard of 10 feet and rear yard of 11.2 feet. In the rear, their neighbor that they are abutting actually has a pretty large accessory structure there. The pool has been there for about 20 years, and the roof over has been there for about 15 years. There have been no complaints from any neighbors, this came about from a solar panel permit.
No comment.
Thank you, have a good night. Only one tonight.
Application number 267-25 Herwin Charles and Janine Roman. Permission to leave pool having rear yard of 11.3 feet, instead of required 14 feet, pool patio having rear yard of 0.5 feet, instead of required 6 feet, and front yard of 15 feet, instead of required 22 feet, and rear yard landscaping of 33.4 percent, instead of required 40 percent. Residence A District, southwest corner of Spur Drive South and St. Louis Avenue, Beşor.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ashley Lowe Keonice from ASB Engineering. Our office is located at 1924 Belmore Avenue in Belmore, New York. I am here this evening on behalf of Charles Herwin and Janine Roman, who is here in the audience with us, who are the owners and occupants of the subject property located at 974 Spur Drive. This is a corner property located in a Residence A Zone, and we are here this evening as a result of an application that was originally filed with the Building Department for a proposed in-ground pool. However, the proposed pool was not proposed with the patio, so we are here to maintain the existing paver patio. The homeowners were unaware that the patio also had a required setback, and the contractor installing the pavers did not advise them of this. We are here this evening requesting a variance to leave or maintain the existing pool with an 11.3-foot setback where 14 feet is required, for which we are requesting just 2.7 feet of relief. This is for the corner of the in-ground pool where it meets the property line. We are also requesting relief for the existing brick paver patio surrounding the pool having a rear yard setback of 0.5 feet, instead of the required 6 feet, which is a variance of 5.5 feet. I would like to note that this is only in the one location in the corner of the property due to the irregular shape. We are also here to request that the second front yard located on St. Louis Avenue, as this is a corner property as I previously mentioned, be reduced from the required 22 feet to 15 feet, for which we are requesting 7 feet of relief. Lastly, we are requesting permission to leave the rear yard landscaping of 33.43 percent, instead of the required 40 percent. We would like to note that the majority of these requests are as a result of the corner property being irregularly shaped, as it makes the logistics a touch more difficult to make sure compliance is met in all directions. These are only requests, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. Look at that.
Sorry? I don't see a six-foot fence here, am I crazy? I'd have nothing to add to the presentation.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 268-25 David and Brittany Campatello. Permission to leave in-ground pool having side yard of 12.4 feet and hot tub having side yard of 7.1 feet, instead of required 14 feet each, and pool patio having side yard of 5.5 feet, instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, northwest side of Wagstaff Lane and Wagstaff Lane, West Islip.
Good evening. My name is Sal Masulo, 458 Akerson Boulevard, Bright Waters, New York.
David Campatello, 158 Wagstaff Lane, West Islip, New York, 11795.
Yeah, as you can see from the survey, we, the patio is a little closer to the pool, closer to the property line in that one area, and it's because the pool when it was installed was a little, became a little skewed. We did have the setbacks correct at the layout, however, when it was actually finally installed, it kind of missed on that one edge a little bit. The entire property on that, on the north side and the west side is covered with green giant evergreens in the seven to eight-foot range, and even in the front, there's an existing established landscape which does not allow any visibility into the yard. So the yard is very private and really has no impact on any of the neighbors. Regarding the hot tub, that was not in the original application, it was kind of an afterthought that while the place was all opened up, that we, the hot tub was added, so, and I know that that's at 7 feet, it's supposed to be at 14. The main reason for that is if we slid it any further to the south, there's a giant specimen Japanese maple that we would've had to put a, we'd had to put the foundation, everything into the root system of this probably 40, 50-year-old maple, and we really didn't want to compromise that if we could help it, so. You got it? Okay.
Just to quickly comment, yeah, like you said, it's being screened, and also, these are next to the side yard, but it's actually because of the orientation next to the neighbor's front yard, so it's, I think it's very unlikely that it's going to end up bothering them very much.
Thank you very much.
Application number 269-25 Derrick Splendorio. Permission to leave shed having 14 feet behind the front line of the dwelling, instead of required 20 feet. Residence A District, east side of Yale Avenue, 347.69 feet south of Riverdale Avenue, Oakdale.
Hi, how you doing? My name's Derrick Splendorio, 127 Yale Avenue, Oakdale, New York, 11769. Yes.
No comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you very much.
Application number 270-25 Sebastian Ulaska and Sylvia Rosaska. Permission to leave second-story deck having rear yard of 22 feet, instead of required 25 feet, shed having 15 feet behind the front line of the dwelling, instead of required 20 feet, and six-foot fence having front yard of 0.6 feet, instead of required 10 feet. Residence A District, southwest corner of Cutter Court and Viking Drive, West Islip.
Brian Fiori, 208 North Wisconsin Avenue, Massapeacon, New York, architect, appearing on behalf of the homeowners, and they have recently purchased this house and are doing renovations to it, and they built the deck without a permit. It's 22 feet from the rear yard where 25 is required, so it's three feet closer to the rear yard, so across the whole back of the house, comes off the house 11 and 1/2 feet on one side, and 8 and 1/2 feet on this, on the second-floor side. They also purchased the house with the existing fence on the corner lot and the shed. So the shed is 15 feet behind the front of the dwelling where 20 is required, and the fence on the corner lot is a common corner lot condition, it's set back from the front of the house, and it doesn't block any intersection traffic, and the fence is actually in pretty poor condition. It's an old fence, it's 30-plus years old. We were looking to replace it with a PVC fence in the same location it's in.
I believe that Mr. Wexler actually just figured it out, but it's five feet above the exception, it's a trivial amount, over the exception, not even really worth mentioning. Besides that, I think everything else is relatively straightforward.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Application number 271-25 Joshua and Taryn Bernardo. Permission to leave shed having 3.84 feet behind the front line of the dwelling, instead of required 20 feet, and hot tub having rear yard of 8.8 feet, instead of required 10 feet. Residence B District, east side of Whitman Avenue, 288 feet north of Fifth Street, Islip.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joshua Bernardo, my wife Taryn Bernardo, from 99 Whitman Avenue.
My name is Taryn Bernardo, 99 Whitman Avenue, Islip, New York, 11751.
Yes, sir. It's really not possible. Can I explain? So, okay, well, can you hear me out? I appreciate it. So, we bought the house, there were 17 trees on the property, the grass was like a forest before we bought the house, there was holes in the roof. We redid the whole house, the whole backyard, our neighbors could not even sit outside, the insects, the bugs were so bad. We've spent over $100,000 on our backyard, and I showed you pictures, and we put turf in the backyard, and I cannot move my shed because if I put the turf in anywhere else and it won't fit anywhere else, my turf will sink. So I really would appreciate it if you can help me on this, please. I do have also a letter here for one of my neighbors, can I give it to you? I just gave it to her. Yes. Also, all my neighbors that live around me, they are very happy with how we came into the neighborhood and how we bettered the neighborhood and the town, so with the pictures, you really can see, I showed you before and after pictures, it's really not possible, so I really would appreciate it. And if you like, I mean, I can put our bodies up in front of the fence, you know, and, you know, and hide the, you know, I do have our bodies in my backyard already, so I would, if you, if we can, you know, I can put them in front of the fence to hide the shed, so no one sees it.
So, it wasn't really a topic, but I, this hot tub is not problematic. The shed, usually the reason we want these to be set back behind the dwelling is because they're seen visible from the street, that's typically the concern at least. If the board was amenable to it being screened in some way, I don't know if that's very enforceable, but that could potentially reduce that as a concern. I pretty much am finished, that's the concern, so if it were to be, I think there has been at least a case in the past where a non-visible shed was given a closer thing, but I think in that case it was a more permanent solution than a tree that's not currently there, at least. Turf does not count as rear yard landscaping, it's not in the call at the meeting, but it does not count.
I bought, when I bought the shed, I went to a reputable company, and they told me it had to be four feet from the property line, which it is, but I didn't know it couldn't be in front, you know, on the side, I mean, I don't want to, you know, you know, there's other people on the, you know, I don't want to, you know, say anything about anybody else on my street, but there's other homes on the street that have two sheds next to their home. I really would appreciate this, if you can please work with me. Like I said, I have no problem putting up more of our bodies in front of the fence to hide it, and also to remind you, the house had no permits. When I bought the house, the, like, different things on the house had no permits, and I made everything official, so my taxes did go up, and I did everything to do, I want to do everything the right way to the town and to you guys, so, can you see? Well, I'm trying to do the right thing, and I really, like, my wife and I, we work very hard, it's our first home. This, okay. I mean, I've had inspectors come to my home up until two weeks ago for the pool, and they, they knew that was back there, because I, we spoke about it.
Those aren't zoning inspectors, those are building inspectors. So zoning, wrote the zoning denial, which led to your application here, from the survey that you submitted to zoning. So that's a zoning person.
Okay. I didn't hear you?
From the back.
Okay, I mean, I have all our bodies, all beds, we work, you know, the landscaper comes every week, he, he cleans them out, he, you know, checks my, our bodies. I'm a very OCD man, like, they, they are, you know, they, I want my property to look beautiful for my neighborhood. I own a cleaning business, so. So what does that mean? Okay, so, so, there'll be, what, a letter sent to me, or? Okay, well, if, if I can distress it to you one more time? Okay, well, it really would mean a lot to us. Thank, hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Application number 273-25 Marku Family LLC. Permission to leave roofed-over porch having front yard of 22.3 feet and second-story addition having front yard of 29.2 feet, instead of required 40 feet each. Residence A District, southeast corner of Richard Avenue and Park Place, Islip Terrace.
So, Michael O'Rado, 535 Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York, B16, it's the office, 11747. So we're here today asking the board to-
Mr. O'Rado, if you could just speak into the microphone.
Sorry. It's better? So we're here today asking the board to grant relief to leave a roofed-over porch having a front yard setback of 22.3 feet, and a second-floor addition having a front yard setback of 29.2 feet, where 40 feet is required. So there was a permit from 2005, which was permit number B002-58061, that went in front of this board on March 29, 2005, and it was granted on April 5, 2005, which approved the second-story addition having a secondary front yard setback of 12 feet, instead of the required 30 feet, and a side yard of 9.66 feet, instead of the required 14 feet. So there was no mention of the front yard setback, because the survey that they had submitted had a front yard setback of 48.26 feet. So when I went on Suffolk County GIS, it doesn't look like this house has moved or changed location since 1984. So what we believe happened here was the survey was obviously incorrect, because the original survey and the current survey that we have still shows very similar side yard setbacks. So the previous was 12-foot and 9.66, and the new survey shows 11.64 and 10.02. The primary front yard setback on the original survey showed the 48.26, but the current survey shows 23.3, which is the reason why we're here asking for the front yard setback. We don't feel that if this application is granted, it'll have a negative impact on the property or surrounding properties, nor will be add a character to the neighborhood. There also were two other zoning issues that have been corrected with permit number 228021. The inspections took place on March 27. This was to correct the six-foot fence in the front yard, which has now been replaced and put in the correct location, and also a demo of a carport that was attached to a detached garage.
Surveyor made a big mistake, it's the same surveyor, it's Donald Mounds, so- Yeah, the second floor was approved, but we, the Board of Appeals at that time did not consider front yard setback, because the survey indicated the house was setback 48 feet from Richard Avenue.
Yeah, so I brought up the old survey that was seen by the board right there, and as you can, maybe read, maybe not, it does say 48 feet, it's the same surveyor, 20 years later, somehow that, that survey and the current one were off by 25 feet, so it wasn't considered at the time, but to the best that I can tell, I agree with them, the dimensions of the house are identical to what the board seemed to hear back then.
So he was wrong back then, right now, or vice versa?
To the best that we can tell, it's correct now. It's close to the street, it's-
He's getting better with age. Yeah, we all are, aren't we?
You can tell just by looking at the picture.
Are you a better lawyer now than you were 20 years ago?
I'm not a good lawyer at all.
Trying to give you a softball.
Oh, Wexler, I'll never take a softball from you.
It's in line with all the other houses, this area has-
It's 27 feet.
Yeah, if you could show the aerial again, that would be helpful.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I would also agree with that, it's, even if it wasn't for the survey mistake, I think it's pretty reasonable, given the neighborhood. Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 274-25 Joseph and Stephanie Gliamas. Permission to leave roofed-over patio 12 by 14, having rear yard of 4 feet, instead of required 25 feet, and service counter having rear yard of 2.5 feet, instead of required 4 feet. Residence B District, east side of McCall Avenue, 220 feet north of Fourth Street, West Islip.
Good evening, board, Joseph Gliamas, 410, McCall Avenue, West Islip, New York, 11795.
Are you here on the roofed-over patio? The service counter?
Yes, sir. The service counter, the noted service counter is, it's not a permanent structure, it's a modular, it has a sink in it, so I don't, I'm not sure why that came about, that could be moved out of there.
It's, it's gonna be, there's the survey. It's right there.
Is the service counter basically a bar?
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's a bar, but it's freestanding, it's just a modular from a-
Yeah, so the, your surveyor indicates it's masonry, sink, fridge, wet bar, so that's-
It's not masonry, it's, it's like that stone-faced panel, it's, it's a modular unit. It can be moved out of there, it's movable.
Okay. Yeah, if it's over, if it's, if any masonry wall or structure requires a 4-foot setback.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like stone, but it's just, it's a, it's a full stone panel face, so, and the sink that's in it is just by a garden hose, there's no, you know, it's not draining anywhere, it's, it's just a utility counter.
The roof over, can somebody point out, I'm sorry, the roof over patio, right, 4 feet, instead of required 25?
The roof over patio is the end right here, attached to the garage, or what was, one AV once a garage?
Yes, it's a garage.
It, it looks like the same roofline as the rest of the house, because it's kind of is, that's why it's, instead of 25, it's because it's attached. What I can say about that is if it was detached, 4-foot would actually be conforming. Now, this has happened before, I think this is a pretty unique case, because the house currently holds .7 rear yard, which was granted by the Board of Appeals.
That was, that was, that was filed through the previous owner, when the extension went on the back of the house and connected to the garage.
Correct, yeah, they connected a breezeway to the garage.
I'm less than what the garage is technically on the old bank, on the roof over.
So, I would agree with that, it's actually more conforming than his current setback that was granted by the board.
Can you zoom out?
Sure.
When was that grant?
86.
86, yeah.
And as far as, it's not really even visible from any of the neighbors in the location that it is, it doesn't impede on anything, you know?
It's visible from the sky.
Gotcha.
When the pilots flying into jail.
Gotcha.
Any other questions at this time? Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Alright, I'll take a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the application.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, board, have a good evening.
Application number 275-25 MNA Holdings, New York, Corp. Permission to erect two-story dwelling leaving front yard on a through-lot of 32 feet, instead of arterial highway setback of 45 feet. Residence B District, north side of Thomas Street, 81.25 feet west of Jefferson Avenue, through-lot to Motor Parkway, Brentwood.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Paul Curcio, I am the project manager for Christopher Garten Architect, I'm here representing my client to construct this new two-story residence. There was a previous house that had existed on this lot, and it had a existing setback at the point, at the time of 30.4 feet, where a 45-foot setback is required. We are proposing the new construction for a new, new two-story dwelling, and we're requesting 32 feet where a 45-foot is required. So it's a 1.6-foot improvement from what was there. He had to demolish the existing house, because the existing house had foundation issues, so we are proposing this new house to obviously occupy a vacant lot, which is an ISOR currently, and also the- Some of the neighbors are listed, and again, it was just going by the County GIS, some are at 27.5, 42.3, 39 feet, 31 feet, 38.4, 27.9. So I feel that it's kind of consistent fitting that neighborhood and that street with the new construction, and also due to the setbacks of having a required 45-foot arterial highway, and also having a 25-foot secondary front yard on the opposite, on Thomas Street, that would only leave us with a 22-foot building envelope to build a house, so.
I would say yes, it's more conforming than the old house, it conforms with the neighborhood, and it completely conforms to zoning other than an arterial highway setback.
Thank you very much.
Application number 276-25 Cheryl Coletti. Permission to erect two-story addition leaving side yards of 11.2 feet and 13.7 feet, instead of required 14 feet each, and total side yards of 24.9 feet, instead of required 28 feet. Residence B District, west side of Roosevelt Avenue, 184.42 feet, south of Tariff Street, Seville. Seville.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Coletti, 102 Roosevelt Avenue, Seville, 11782.
Good evening. I'm Chris Coletti, Seville, New York, 102 Roosevelt, Seville, New York, 11782.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Christopher Ang, 83, East Main Street, Patrog, New York. We are proposing a rear two-story addition that's going to maintain two setbacks, two side yard setbacks of 11.2 and 13.7 instead of the 14 feet required, and we're asking for a combined of 24.9 instead of the 28 feet required. The addition that we're asking for is in line with the existing house, so I'm hoping that the Board will grant the side yard setbacks on this one. Yeah.
So they're raising the existing setback?
We're building a two, we're building a two-story addition in the rear.
As was said, they're staying in line, and there are several other grants that are similar to this.
Anyone else would like to be heard in this matter?
All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application number 277-25, 28 Evergreen Realty LLC. Permission to leave reconstructed above ground pool with hot tub, having rear yard of 20.1 feet instead of required 25 feet, and to leave patio on side property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence B AA District, east side of Evergreen Avenue, 200 feet south of Central Walk, Seville.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham Associates, Bright Waters, New York, representing the owners. This application's pretty simple. We're just looking to reconstruct an existing pool. We will be adding a hot tub into it and what they call a beach area. It's where you put lounge chairs in shallow water. In 2013, I presented the same application, and the Board granted rear yard relief of 16.3. We are making the pool a little smaller this round, so we're only asking for 20.1. Back in 2013, I had other precedent that I used as well of like 14-foot rear yard in the neighborhood. So if the Board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
In 2013, you were granted 20 feet, right?
16...
It was amended to 20.
Yeah, it was amended to 20.
Which is the same as what you're asking for now, so that's, it's not a big deal, but...
I didn't realize it was amended.
Planning any comments?
Besides that, no. It was 20, but that's the same he's asking for now, so it's fine.
Okay. Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll make a motion and grant the application.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 278-25, James Marrow and Frank Marrow. Permission to elevate one-story dwelling, leaving front yard of 24.3 feet instead of required 40 feet, and side yard of 5.5 feet instead of required 14 feet. To leave one-story addition, having side yard of 13.5 feet instead of required 14 feet, portico having front yard of 18.4 feet instead of required 40 feet, and driveway on side property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence A District, west side of Grassmere Avenue, 113.77 feet north of Shore Drive, Oakdale.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham Associates, Bright Waters, New York. This application involves a FEMA house lift to an existing CO'd home, I believe it was built in 1926. So it is close to the side yard. However, we are strictly lifting in place. The lift is rather modest, only two and a half feet. We also are seeking to reconstruct a front portico from a flat roof to a gable, and that's for the front yard relief. All this is an existing. It is CO'd. If the Board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Graham, I have that question. If the existing five, four, five, really have a side, and now they want to raise, doesn't that support the home owner or the neighbors that have that close to the side of the yard?
I agree. We did speak with the neighbors, the homeowner did. No one appeared to have any objections. Unlike Fire Island, we are only lifting this two and a half feet. Typical house lifts, you see, the beach are going up five, six, seven feet.
So you're lifting it two and a half feet?
That's it.
Okay. Yeah, one floor. Okay. Any comments?
That's what I was going to say. It's a very small lift on a one-story house. It's not very tall.
Not a big lift.
Nope.
It's more for insurance purposes.
Is anyone else would like to be heard?
More for insurance purposes. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Application number 279-25, John and Miriam Dormus. As the applicant arrived on that application, we had word that they were stuck in some traffic. Application number 280-25, Flores Home Development Corp. Permission to leave two-story addition, 4.9 by 13.4, having side yard of 8.3 feet instead of required 14 feet, total side yards of 27.8 feet instead of required 28 feet, expanding nonconforming use of two-family dwelling by less than 25 percent. Residence B District, northeast corner of Brightside Avenue and Railroad Avenue, Central Isle.
Hi, Dana Bush, 41 Whittier Avenue, Medford, New York, 11763, here for the owner. We're coming for the two-story addition. Both stories are used just for a bathroom. The second story has the toilet, tub, and sink, and on the main level, it's just the toilet, sink, and a little linen closet. The tub is actually part of the original house. We are asking for the five-foot relaxation for the side yard, but our total side yard is only asking a couple inches. My client just purchased this home a few months ago, and it came with some violations, so he just wants to get everything up to code, legal, and get everything in order.
Do you have any information for us concerning prior grants at 8.3 instead of 14, and then that's significant?
I'm, well, it's 8.3 with the addition. I'm reading it as, so it has the, we mean, just the 14 setback, how the house was built. So then the addition brings us to the 8.3. Wait, are we not con...
No, no, so...
You repeat your question.
You know what? I'm going to save you because we have somebody who knows a little about.
Okay.
Nick?
Nick, save me, please.
So the house was existing at 8.3 to the best that I can tell, since it was originally constructed. It predates zoning. At some point, there was a second story, a very small second story. It's about 65 square feet over what was a side entrance put in after the fact, wasn't part of the original survey. I would say that's the case with most of the houses, or at least these three in a row, certainly. The other two actually have less conforming side yards, from what I can tell, although they weren't board grants, because most of this area predates zoning. So I think maybe the main point there, though, is that it's a fairly nonconforming area, equivalent to what they're asking for, and it was a 65-square-foot addition on what was a part that predated zoning.
Can we note that in the decision that it predates zoning, it's preexisting, it's only 65 square feet, and it's no big deal?
Whatever was said.
This way, we don't come in and say, oh, you granted 8.3.
Just for you.
Thank you.
Direct quote, no big deal.
Well, to Wexler, no.
We have a crack staff.
Everybody believes us, but we did. Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Just gonna go through the 630s, and then we'll do a... Application number 281-25, Jennifer Fiorenza. Permission to install in-ground pool, leaving side and rear yards of six feet instead of required 10 feet each. Residence B District, west side of Hyman Avenue, 121 feet north of Orinoco Drive, Bayshore.
Hello, members of the Board. This is Jennifer Fiorenza, 1078 Hyman Avenue, Bayshore, New York.
And just introduce myself and the future spouse, Paul Schmick, 1078 Hyman.
So we're here on the in-ground pool?
Yes, sir.
With rear yards of six and side yards of six.
Yeah, yep. What we have a rule here is, we'll grant a variance, but we don't grant it on both sides. And if you can comply on one side, I think the rest of us would grant six feet. I can always pick myself. So one side has to comply.
Okay.
One side, you can pick whatever side you want. It looks like...
Yeah. Okay. Are we able to do, so if we, if once, you're saying that one side could get granted, but the other side, it's gotta be...
Six and ten.
Is it possible to get six and eight? I'm just playing with inches.
You can, but six, you can ask, and we can say six and ten.
Okay. So six to 10 is the final answer?
Boy, you commit.
Okay.
Does anyone else have another answer?
You can try. Throw down that. Is there any comment?
I would say that a above-ground pool did get granted at this property before, and it was given eight and eight, which, in terms of the overall, I guess it's still two feet plus two is four.
But that was a below-ground pool?
No, it was for a proposed pool. I don't really see that as being terribly different. If anything, an in-ground pool is less impactful because it's below grade in terms of it bothering the neighbors, in my opinion. It's neither here nor there, in my opinion, not that much. But I guess at six and 10 versus eight and eight, it's technically four feet either way. It's just where you're taking it from.
I like that thinking on side of the bottom. And I'm not wrong. I mean, you have options.
Yeah. Yeah, it would just be reworking the pool. I wanted to keep it as far from the house so that when you turn the cows, it... Yeah, yeah. So with the previous ruling of eight and eight, is eight and an eight a poss... Okay. Oh, so for, because it's in the ground? Okay.
When that pool extinguishes or deteriorates?
Well, to be clear, it was for a proposed pool, so it wasn't for the life of the pool. It was a proposal, so it didn't currently exist. They just gave eight and eight.
I mean, it's up to you with risk, what I would have gone to accept or not.
What do you want to ask for? I think we can, if possible, eight, as possible to get the six and the eight.
No, I said, I go with more like one side.
Yes.
Going around the circle.
Yeah. Okay, if we don't have a choice, we don't have a choice. We have to go with six and eight and go back to the pool company to just rework the print then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We can't, we have to amend, or we have to come back, because we have to agree, or we have to...
We're gonna agree to six and 10.
Okay, but you said six and eight.
We're gonna agree to six and 10 because that seems to be the option that is... I'm sorry? I would probably defer back to the pool company to see what I think would make more sense.
Then you let them, you know, make a resolution that one side complies, the other side on six feet. I mean, that's also giving you a 40 percent...
Yes, I understand. Yes.
I know, you and I.
Yes, I, yes, I am. I am.
Is anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'll make a motion back. You grant the application, five, that one side, that one side complies, and the other side... Whatever side, I think you're...
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks.
The applicant has arrived. We're gonna just finish with the next 630 case and let them leave, and then we'll call your case. Application number 282-25, Lynn Anne Keeler Thurber. Permission to leave pond with waterfall, having side yard of 2.1 feet instead of required four feet, and rear yard landscaping of 32.1 percent instead of required 40 percent. Residence A District, east side of West Shore Road, 650.42 feet south of Stuyvesant Road, Oakdale.
Hello, I'm Lynn Thurber, 63 West Shore Road, Oakdale, New York, 11769.
Good evening. Kathleen McHenry, P.O. Box 5, Center Merches, New York, 11934. Forgive me, my voice has been coming in and out for the past week or so. It's like allergies or something. We are here before you tonight requesting permission to maintain a pond with a waterfall holding a side yard setback of 2.1 feet instead of four feet required, as well as existing rear landscaping at 32.1 percent instead of the permitted 40 percent required. First, I would like to state that the items we are here before you tonight seeking relief for all stem from an accident causing flood damage to Ms. Thurber's home. In an attempt to permit the repair work, these issues came to light. This house has been in Ms. Thurber's family for three generations and was passed down to her by her parents many years ago. The pond and waterfall and landscaping have all been in existence in the exact way that they are now since prior to 2007, based on historical aerials. Regarding the pond with the waterfall, it is a small little pond that is located on the side of Ms. Thurber's property, almost completely behind the rear foundation of the house. It is roughly 65 feet from the road and 45 feet from the rear lot line. There is a six-foot fence located around the sides and rear perimeter of the property, including the south side of the lot where the pond is located, creating a screening for the southerly neighbor. A little backstory, this pond was built by...
I think we might back, but I think you all...
Okey-dokey.
Is there anybody?
Okay.
The next?
No, understood.
Any more comments?
No, no comment.
Anyone else would like to be heard in this matter?
That's where I was going with it. She judged would like, for the record, what I was about to say, that, I mean, I think we got it, but that the pond was built by her son and the neighborhood kids many years ago, so it was very important to her. No, it's very important to her that she's able to keep it. Thank you very much. You know, we understood that. We were just trying to say how important it was. Thank you.
Okay. Don't go anywhere, Kathleen.
Oh, that's right.
You've requested an adjournment on your next application, which was 14-25?
Yes.
Daniel Bravo and Sandra Reyes. Is there anybody here to be heard on that application? Okay, you've asked for a hearing in July?
We just need at least 30 days.
Okay. I don't think that the July 1 hearing is a good idea, because that's really close to 30 days, so the July 22, I think, would be better.
Okay, if we want to do that one.
Okay.
So motion to adjourn till July 22?
Motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Adjourn to July 22.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone. And the applicant has arrived on that previous application, so if we could just go backwards a little bit, we're going to call application number 279-25, John and Miriam Dormus. Permission to erect roof over, leaving height of 20.25 feet instead of permitted 14 feet, rear yard, and I understand this is a typo, of 25 feet instead of required 10 feet, and rear yard occupancy of 33.5 percent instead of permitted 12.5 percent. Residence B AA District, southwest corner of Sloop Walk and Club Walk, Summer Club.
Good evening. My name is Eric Schiller. I'm representing...
Bring the microphone up, Mr. Schiller.
I'm representing John and Miriam Dormus. I'm their architect. We have learned a couple of weeks ago that there's some opposition to this application from the neighbor immediately to the south. And after much discussion with my client, we'd like to adjourn and have an opportunity to approach the neighbor with some concessions that we feel will make this application more palatable to them. We'd like to come back with an application that neighbors are in support of, so I would like to request an adjournment on behalf of my client.
If you could, just by ways of hand, how many people here for this application?
Me.
Yes, we don't you, Mr. Bertolino. Is anyone else here to speak on this application? No?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Steve Bertolino, 130 West Main Street, East Islet, New York, representing Jill and Mike Solomon. They are the property owners to the immediate south. Obviously, he's entitled to his adjournment as a right, I would believe. I just want the Board to know that this structure's already built, and I have a packet I can just submit to the Board. You can peruse this between now and the adjourn date. I don't see Jay around today.
I took the day off.
Yeah, I would love. Yeah, so we and and between that and the obvious typo, we'd like to amend the call and correct it twice before we re-notice it.
So, Mr. Sullivan, if you can break that clampdown for me, in the back there in the front is my cover letter. There are two emails from other property owners who I do not represent, but I told them that I would pass along their emails. And then there are six packets of duplicate photographs. I made extra because I thought everybody might want their own packet. And in my opposition, I would go over each photograph and show you what they were. But I think if you just looked at photograph number one.
Well, wait, 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 wait. It's a claim to be an adjournment. We don't need to go into it.
All right. Well, I'm just pointing out, just look at photo number one.
We're gonna amend the call.
Yeah, let's, you want to amend the call first?
Yes.
All right, so.
To leave.
Yeah, so, all right. I'm gonna make a motion to amend the call to read as follows. Permission to leave detached roof over, roof over, leaving height of twenty point five feet instead of permitted fourteen feet. Rear yard of two point five feet instead of required ten feet. And the balance shall, I'll read it. And rear yard occupancy of thirty-three point five percent instead of permitted twelve and a half percent.
Motion.
Second, please. All in favor? Hold on a minute, sir.
Hold on.
The call of the meeting has been modified. Now, sir, yes?
There is no roof, and we don't plan for a roof. Roofed over is not correct. It should be, it's an opened lattice.
That's the way zoning wrote up the denial on the call of the meeting.
So to correct it, I should.
There's a roof over this.
That's a, is this the roof over you're saying is not a roof?
It's a, it's an open trellis. Is that a roof? An opened lattice is not, it's not a roof.
Okay, but in our parlance, we call a roof over.
Okay.
The language that we use.
So we're adjourned? Yeah, but let's try and, we want to keep it a short date.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Just so that we can get this on the calendar as quickly as possible and as accurately as possible, there's at least three other structures that are existing that are not on the call of the meeting. One would be the second roof over structure, which is in my photograph packet, on the south side of the dwelling. The second would be the oversized in-ground pool that I believe was denied and has not yet been completed. And the third would be an elevator, which was installed on the east side of the property. If it's if it's not on the call and. I understand. And what I'm trying to prevent, Mr. Wexler, is the incremental dragging of this out because I've already advised my clients that they're probably gonna have to live with this for this summer. But the fact that the applicant chose deliberately not to put those structures on the call of the meeting, and now he's asking for an adjournment, is simply gonna delay the inevitable. They should amend, get the new zoning denial, have it amended correctly with all structures that need a variance, put it before this board once and for all with a certified copy of a survey certified to the zoning board of appeals so that we can see what actually exists on site, so that we're not playing this incremental game of, oh, I didn't know I needed that.
May I, may I speak to that when it's my turn?
We can't consider things not on the call of the calendar. If somebody elects not to do it, we can't superimpose what we think should be there. It's the applicant puts on the call what they think they want a variance for. If something that they neglect, that is on them, and they'll have to come back again. So honestly, never mind. So I think we should just adjourn.
Well, we do have the opportunity to address those things if if the applicant is willing to seek a new zoning denial that addresses them.
Well, if I might speak to that, I I did not write this zoning denial. This was presented to the zoning department, to the zoning department with all of the structures shown in the documents.
Right, but you accepted the zoning denial and you filed it at our office.
Wait, wait, wait. Isn't this getting way far field of where we need to go? Right now, there is an amended call, there's a request for an adjournment, and that's what we need to consider on what somebody could do, should do, what might be there, what could be done. That's not before us.
Right, but that that I consider unfortunate because they accepted a zoning denial, signed for it, more or less, and brought it to our office and indicated indicated that there were no other structures that needed relief, and apparently there are.
Maybe they don't want relief for those structures, but that's their problem. I don't know how we superimpose what we think should be on with this.
Well, in any case, you're talking about modifying the structure anyway, right?
Yes, and we were led to understand that the other items that are listed did not require a zoning.
Who led you, when people use that, it's, hang on, my understanding, we were led to believe, who is it specifically by name?
I I made it.
And serial number who advised you, who lead you to believe?
I made an application to the zoning department, and it was reviewed by Dan Burkos, showing all of the structures in question in plan and in three-dimensional form. Dan wrote the zoning denial. The the hot tub indeed is being modified to be compliant, and that revised drawing has been submitted and approved. So I don't think, and I'm gonna have to get in touch with Dan to make sure that this call was written correctly. It is not our intention to drag this out. We want to be good neighbors. My client wants.
Okay, why would this, okay, we're getting, again, enough. We're gonna adjourn it, and between now and the adjourn date, we can figure out and take whatever appropriate steps you believe you need to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so adjournment date, June twenty-fourth?
Want to try for June twenty-four? You think you can have a revised denial by then? Or the next hearing is July one, so one of those would be.
I'd prefer to go to July one, if that's okay for you.
Yeah, we do, but as as opposing counsel has pointed out, the season is possibly lost already.
Let's just make sure the objection is available.
My client does not want to be hostile.
All right, wait, that's not before us. Hostility is not part of zoning.
July first is fine with myself as well. Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn to July first. Second. All in favor?
When did hostility become part of?
Well, I think there's plenty of hostility in zoning. I didn't, there's plenty of hostility. Eight weeks.
Okay. Application number two eighty-three dash twenty-five, sixty-two West Main Holdings LLC. Permission to install exterior lighting illuminating adjacent property with illumination level of nine point five foot candles instead of maximum permitted zero point zero five foot candles. Business District, south side of West Main Street, seventy-six point nine nine feet west of South Park Avenue, through lot to Gibson Street, Bay Shore.
Good evening. My name is Nick Fluger of Ball of Fluger Architects. We're at eighty-five East Main Street, Bay Shore, New York, one one seven zero six. So we're here tonight for the installation of exterior light fixtures and the additional illumination level beyond the property line, as it was mentioned. The building is on the property line on the west side, that's on the park side. So any any new light fixtures will inherently produce additional lighting levels over the property line. Our initial thoughts on proposing the lighting on the side of the building was to provide a pleasant atmosphere and also add some security, not just for the building, but for the park as well. We had submitted some some pictures that the owners have taken of some paraphernalia that they've seen in the park. And it's not just a one-time occurrence. They, you know, repeatedly see this paraphernalia in the park. So it's known, you know, generally that, you know, lighting will typically help keep away unwanted activity. So we feel that, you know, this would only be beneficial, you know, for the project as well as the park and the community. We've also submitted a rendering, which I also have here, just depicting what the proposed facade design would look like, what the proposed lighting. And then there were also several pictures that were submitted showing, you know, real photos of similar lighting on the on a property line in the downtown area. Only our lighting will only point downward, not downward and upward. With that, I can take any questions from the board. Yes, sir. Correct. Correct. Yes. I I understand, yes. Sure. Yeah, I mean, generally, nine, I mean, it's hard to verbally explain what nine point five foot candles is, but generally, nine point five foot candles is is not a lot. Point oh five foot candles is almost nothing, you know, in terms of what you can visibly see. Sure. Sure. Yeah, I mean, again, really, the only thing I could say is that is that we tried to accurately depict it in in the rendering what nine point five foot candles would would look like. You know, so that that is a, you know, pretty accurate depiction of what we're talking about. You know, again, nine point five foot candles is is not is not a whole lot in the lighting world, but, you know, I would love to hear from from planning. I mean, it's, again, it's it's really not that bright. I'm I'm sure we could, we could probably bring it down if we needed to. Yes. Okay. I am also not an expert on lighting, but I'll do my best here. It's, so that what the code's trying to address is light trespass onto off of somebody's property. That's why the number is so small here. Point oh five is, as he's saying, effectively nothing. It's basically imperceptible. So what's happening here is the light is pointing down. You can see from here, there's a park next to the building. They're putting the lights on that side of the building next to the park. So the reason the number is so high is because the light is being, well, it's starting on what is town property. So instead of it fading away as it travels in distance, it's shining directly onto the neighboring property, which we're not opposed to. Because it's town property. So I spoke with parks. There's no objection to it on that thing. But that's that's why the number is so high, you're right. Usually, what would happen is it would be a light that's like, let's say, twenty feet from the property line. And then the light would get less bright as it travels along towards the neighboring property. In this case, it basically starts on the neighboring property. It just so happens that it's the town's property. And because it's focused straight down, it drops off very rapidly. It's probably reaches point oh five within like ten feet or so and going to the park. That's a good answer. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you. Take care.
Application number two ten dash twenty-five, adjourned from April twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, Joanne McNulty. Permission to erect second-story addition, thirty-four point three by forty point five irregular, leaving front yard of twenty-three point two seven feet instead of required twenty-five feet and side yard of five feet instead of required fourteen feet. Roofed over porch, leaving side yard of five feet instead of required fourteen feet. Floor area ratio of thirty percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. And to leave shed, having side yard of three point six feet and rear yard of three feet instead of required four feet each. Residence B District, east side of Manituck Boulevard, three hundred and twenty feet north of Ontario Drive, Bay Shore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Gennaro Pozzolino, twenty-one twenty-five Deer Park Amia, Deer Park, New York, one one seven two nine. We're back in front of the board. We revised the plans as per the board's suggestion, and we've diminished the severity of the variance being sought on the minimum side yard. We're proposing a ten-foot setback instead of the fourteen-foot permitted, difference of four feet. Excuse me. Variance for aggregate side yard setback, requesting twenty-four point seven five instead of the twenty-eight feet. Variance for front yard setback, requesting twenty-four point two five from permitted twenty-five feet. Oh, yes.
Briefly, yes. Is there anything in particular you were wondering about, or? Yes, I I saw the plans today, so I am aware of the modifications. The five instead of fourteen, as I understand it, will be for a fairly minor roofline alteration for the currently existing first story and for a porch, which, again, will be one story. The second story, which was originally proposed at five feet, is now being brought back to being ten feet setback, which I do not believe is unreasonable.
Sure. No, it was, the size was reduced. It is, one second. It's a regular in shape now, so. Sure. Yes, it's a one. Correct. We're not going over the entire first floor, though.
A full second floor setback at ten feet. So not going straight up. Currently, it's at five. He wants to set it back five feet further for the second story at ten instead of fourteen.
Oh, I see you set it back.
Yes.
That is new for that.
Yes.
You want street view, or? Oh, I didn't bring it up. That's sorry.
Oh, you're waiting for the size?
Yeah.
The approximate size is twenty-three feet, eight inches by seventeen, about thirty-five feet. Yes. We cannot leave it in the rear. Okay. Front yard proposed, front yard proposed is twenty-four point two five. From permitted twenty-five feet. Side yard, second floor, we're proposing ten feet instead of fourteen.
Yes, so the second story is ten feet. They're requesting five feet from there for the new front porch.
The front porch, minimum side yard of five feet instead of the fourteen. That's a one story. Yes.
So we can say roofed over porch.
We could say roofed over porch and roofline alteration to one story portion of the house. So roofline alteration, leaving side yard of five feet each, right?
Five feet, yes.
So where the porch runs across the front of the house is currently a one-story portion of the house. It's the garage. And the applicant, after advisement of the board on April twenty-second, has agreed to cut back the second story addition. However, a very minor roofline alteration is going to happen to the existing first story? Or no roofline alteration at all?
There will be a roofline alteration if it's noted in the elevations I submitted. It looks similar to what's what is there now.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest an amendment. Permission to erect second-story addition, leaving front yard of twenty-four point two five feet instead of required twenty-five feet and side yard of ten feet instead of required fourteen feet. To erect roofed over porch and roofline alteration to the one-story portion of the house, leaving side yard of five feet instead of required fourteen feet, with a resultant floor area ratio of?
Twenty-nine point three percent instead of the twenty-five percent.
And to leave shed, having side yard of three point six feet and rear yard of zero, three feet. And to leave shed having side yard of 3.6 feet and rear yard of 0, 3 feet instead of required 4 feet each. Did you say 29.2?
29.3%. Three.
Okay, 3%, thank you. Motion?
So, I'll make a motion?
Motion.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
This is why we ask you to try, and I give you five weeks till you come back again, to try to just let us know what the new call, the meeting, is going to be.
Yes.
Next time, it's going to be longer.
I dropped off the updated...
Yeah, you dropped them off on May 19, but the public notices were, needed to go out a week before that, so...
Why did you wait so long?
We had to, we had to come up with a plan.
But it's at your peril, as you can see, because it's very difficult for us to get the call of the meeting correct.
I understand now, thank you.
So, planning, how do you feel about the new...
I think the new proposal is fairly reasonable. It's the second story now being setback 10 feet in the Residence B neighborhood. There's other grants that are similar or, in some cases, even lower than what they're requesting. At least a couple that are lower, and one that is similar. And, yeah, 10 feet for a second story in Residence B is not too terribly uncommon. It's an older neighborhood that was a conforming setback for a very long time. And with the current side yard being 5 feet, I think this is a reasonable compromise.
Oh, and I just really realized also, devil's in the details. Total side yards of 24.75 instead of required 28. Can we further that into the amendment?
Yes, let's further that.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else like to be heard in this matter? No, okay. And we're all good, then? We'll take a motion, please?
Make a motion to grant the application as amended.
All in favor? All right. Application's been granted as amended.
Thank you. Good evening.
Application number 284-25, Core Mar Inc. Permission to establish legal nonconforming use of pizzeria. Business One District, northeast corner of Udall Road and Muncie Road, West Isle. Hopefully, everybody is here on this application? Did you promise pizza? You promised pizza, yeah, yeah.
My name is Anthony Musometri. I am the present owner of Anthony's Pizza Pasta, 791 Y R Road. Somewhere from far back, it goes 1968 to today, my store hasn't been zoned or CO'd as a pizzeria. I'm here tonight before the board with members of the community that can verify it. I have Mr. Charles Gandolfo. He filed out an affidavit for me about it stating they can go back to probably 1968 that it has been a pizzeria. I'm not changing anything. I'm not putting anything new. I'm not making it bigger, smaller, just keeping what it is and, you know, bringing it up to code.
Any fact-finding hearing to establish legal nonconformity? There's affidavits in the file. There's four there for your review. And there will be one witness, who is usually one of the affians, who's available for cross-examination, but apparently we have more than that.
Do you want to call a witness to establish?
Sure, I'd like to call Charles Gandolfo.
Pardon?
I'd like to call Charles Gandolfo.
Sure.
G A N or G O N?
G A.
G A L. Mr. Gandolfo, can you please give us your name and address?
Charles Gandolfo, 502 Avon Place, West Isle.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Gandolfo. You are familiar with this pizzeria?
Yes, I'm very familiar with it.
Okay. That would be Anthony's Pizzeria?
Anthony's Pizzeria on 792 Udall Road, West Isle.
And how long do you know it to be Anthony's Pizzeria?
I would say at least 1968, 69. My family grew up there. We, you know...
And was it always called Anthony's Pizzeria?
Earlier, I think it was not. I don't remember. I was very young. It was always a pizza place there.
1968?
Yes.
And it's been there continuously?
Continuously, always a pizzeria. And I could attest, we never, not, I don't know if you want to hear this, but never had any parking problems that I know of there because I do some towing in the area. Never had any complaints. A lot of kids in the area go there, a lot of fundraisers, schools...
Does it go back 57 years?
That's right. The crust is very good, yeah. And I have to say...
There's a butt.
Yeah, I'm not getting any free pizza, just so you know.
I don't know what the year is, but 57 years seems to be...
It's the 70s. Sometime in the 70s, we started requiring a special permit for a restaurant like this.
All right, thank you.
Good?
Yeah.
Does anyone else would like to make a comment on this application? Planning, any comments on this application?
No, I have nothing to add.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Musometri? No, all right, I'll take a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, stay put, everybody. Not you, you guys could leave. I need my board.
I don't think we've had this many people on a painless application.
Want me to read it in now? Okay, that would do that. Good.
Oh, that was painless?
Yeah, that was going to get great.
Yeah, Jean Dean Nicola did that, right?
No, he was the one, the witness.
Oh, that's right, he was the witness.
We need to renew 13 accessory apartments and three to family, family use onlys for a period of three years.
Motion. Second, please. All in favor? Aye.
And we have two and possibly three decisions to read into the record. Just be careful of the motions and seconds because I wasn't sure who to attribute to in Chris's absence.
Yeah, right, right. Well, none of them are Chris's, right? No.
Good. And you want me to add the third, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let me just get to it before we start. Give me one second. Okay. Before we get started on the list, we'll go back to the case that was reserved tonight. Application number 271-25, Joshua and Taryn Barnardo. In accordance with a proposed written decision, the application will be granted the hot tub having a rear yard of 8.8 feet and denied the shed having 3.84 feet behind the front line of the dwelling. However, the board will grant permission to move the shed to...
14 feet.
14 feet behind the front line of the dwelling. On motion of...
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, is that good to give? Yeah, that's fine. He's crazy about that. Yeah, he is crazy. Drove them crazy. We're live here.
Yeah, we're live. Application number 136-25, Catherine Sheil. In accordance with a proposed written decision dated May 27, 2025, the application is denied. On motion of...
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Application number 137-25, Cypress Avenue LLC. In accordance with a proposed written decision dated May 27, 2025, the application is granted. On motion of...
Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everybody. That's a wrap.